Welcome to the May 19th, 2025 Troy City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of our meeting. Tonight's invocation and pledge is led by Mr. Seavert. Please stand.
Thank you. Could we please bow our heads? Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance today as we meet to discuss our city. We recognize the youth here who are being guided with your touch to learn the life lessons of sports which extend beyond wins and losses to the principles of dedication, sacrifice, and sportsmanship. We ask for your continued watch over our firefighters and other civil servants who place their personal lives on the line for our citizens and that your divine power keep them safe. We ask for your continued blessings on our community and its citizens. Lord, whether one wears the uniform of a first baseman or a first responder, we pray for the grace to follow your command and love one another as you have loved us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee, here. Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mr. Seavert?
Here.
Mr. Widdon?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. We're moving on to the minutes of last meeting. No, in direct to Paul Duke and Ethan Nosker, newly appointed firefighters, please step forward. Chief Simmons and/or the mayor.
So, we want to welcome two of our newest firefighters. I know each and one of these were from Troy. They were in our friendship program. To all you young baseball players, this is Paul McDonald. Paul McDonald is a court Christian who I watched at a vessel baseball game run right through a fence. And at that time, my son was playing baseball with Paul. And I'm like, who, like, what's the, what's the deal with this guy? Like, he looks like he'd be a great firefighter. And I find out that Paul wanted to be a weller. And then a couple more conversations with me and Paul. And then he applied for our friendship program. Just out of high school, just graduated 2024. Completed his firefighter one and two at the state of Ohio Fire Academy. Finished his EMT through the Edison State Community College. And he's now a full-time firefighter. So, we're so happy to have you, Paul. Two young ones run through fences. But I'm sure if you think Paul, maybe it won't hurt you. Now, Ethan Nosker, he's from Troy, from the city of Troy. Graduated Troy High School in 2023, 24. And so, now Ethan is a little different than Paul. He came to us in our friendship program. And a lot of our firefighters were saying, man, we're not sure about that Ethan Nosker. And so, but after a few good conversations, he adapted and he overcame. And so, I would say as a traitor of a firefighter, to be able to take constructive criticism and not just listen to it, but apply it. And then he became one of the fan favorites of mine. We're just so excited for our friendship program as well as two young individuals here from our local community that want to serve in capacity that hopefully they don't have to. But if you ever have one of those bad days in your life and you need a firefighter, we got great individuals that will respond and do the call. So, but at this time, we're going to have them, we're going to have our honorable mayor swear them into the city of Troy as full-time firefighter EMTs. And they're also in paramedic school at this time. And Ethan didn't stay trapped, by the way, I'm sorry. He went through the state fire academy with Paul, Edison State EMT, and they're now well already become paramedics, doing very, very well in the class. So, mayor, without further ado.
All right. Good to have you guys here as firefighters now instead of apprentices. Welcome to you as apprentices and was happy to meet you and do that. But now, we're going to swear you in. So, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I say your name.
I, Paul McDonald.
Do solemnly swear that I will...
Same time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, same time. Don't say your name. Say your name. I say your name.
I, Paul McDonald Nosker.
There you go. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
You solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio against all enemies.
And the state of Ohio against all enemies.
Both foreign and domestic.
Both foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge my duties as firefighter...
Discharge my duties as firefighter.
Of the city of Troy Fire Department.
Of the city of Troy Fire Department.
Under the appointment of the department.
Under the appointment of the department.
According to the laws of Ohio.
According to the laws of Ohio.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
Show out me God.
Show out me God.
Congratulations.
So, congratulations. Congratulations, guys.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read the summary of the minutes of the May 5th meeting, please?
Minutes of council, May 5th, 2025. A public hearing was held on ordinance number 015-2025, a rezoning. Committee report, Buildings and Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing a contract for the chlorine gas conversion project at the water plant. Committee also recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a master water service agreement with Miami County and Wes Milton. Personnel committee reported recommending that an agreement be entered into with American Fidelity Insurance Company related to voluntary insurance benefits for full-time employees. Resolution number R21-2025, contract and bid for chlorine gas conversion project at the water plant, first reading, was given, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R22-2025, water agreement with Wes Milton and county commissioners was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R23-2025, authorizing agreement with the American Fidelity Assurance Company related to employee voluntary benefits was given first reading. Ordinance number 06-2025, accepting the Board of Education replat for various easements was given third reading and was adopted. Ordinance number 015-2025, rezoning of a parcel was given second title reading. Following various comments, council adjourned at 8:08 PM.
Move to accept the minutes?
Second.
Motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seavert?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, we'll start tonight with community partnerships. Mrs. Marshall?
This committee met May 12th to consider authorizing the city to participate in the program year 2025 chip partnership agreement with Miami County and Pickwa. This is a grant application program for qualifying LMI extensive home rehabilitation and smaller home repair projects. Only by being a part, a party to the partnership agreement can rehabilitation or repair projects in Troy be included for any chip funds awarded. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into the PY 2025 chip program partnership agreement between the Miami County Board of Commissioners, the city of Pickwa, Ohio, and the city of Troy, Ohio. Respectfully submitted by Mr. Seavert, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Questions, comments? Do you have another one?
I do have another one. This committee met same night, May 12th, to consider the city participating in the Meta Solutions Purchasing Cooperative. These purchasing cooperatives are organizations that meet ORC requirements and that follow the bidding and contracting procedures the city must follow. By becoming a member of the approved purchasing cooperative, the city can participate in meta contracts and pricing. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the city to participate in the Meta Solutions Purchasing Cooperative and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any related documents. This committee supports emergency legislation so that the city can participate in projects and services offered through the Meta Solutions Purchasing Cooperative without delay. Respectfully submitted again by Mr. Seavert, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Questions? Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. We want the finance. Mr. Seavert?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met May 12th to consider a professional service agreement with Timmons Group of Richmond, Virginia, for the updating of the city's GIS system. The project will update the GIS system as the current system is antiquated and will no longer be supported by vendors due to its age, and expand the system to store additional critical date, including the, those related to the city's utility systems and make the available more readily available to other city departments. The cost exceeds the budgeted amount as additional components were included in the RFP. After the budget was approved, additional funds are available from the fund balances of the water and sewer funds. Therefore, it is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional services agreement with Timmons Group of Richmond, Virginia, for the GIS utility network implementation project at a cost not to exceed $310,000. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chairman.
Any questions? Moving on to law and ordinance. Mr. Widdon?
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met May 12th to review the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission regarding rezoning a portion of parcel number DO8105472 located at 191 Commerce Center Boulevard. At the May 5th public hearing and at the committee meeting, concerns were stated by neighboring property owners, which are discussed in the detailed report. After considering all the comments made and reviewing the information provided, this committee recommends that council support the recommendation of the choice, of the Troy Planning Commission and approve ordinance number 015-2025 based on the findings set forth in the detailed report. This is respectfully submitted by Kristi Marshall, William Twist, and myself as chair.
Questions on the rezon? You also have an oral liquor permit?
I do. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the attached notice of a stock transfer for the D1, D2, D3, and D6 liquor permits held by Speakeasy Ramen LLC, doing business as Speakeasy Miso. The police department has not recommended an objection or that a hearing be requested.
Questions on that? What have you on the streets and sidewalks? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met May 12th regarding the final consent legislation requested by the Ohio Department of Transportation for the ODOT resurfacing project of a portion of West Main Street from Experiment Farm Road to the Western Corporation Limit. This project will be bid by ODOT this summer with the city responsible for approximately 20% of the project cost. It is the recommendation of the committee which is recommending that legislation be prepared, approving the final consent legislation for the ODOT resurfacing project of a portion of West Main Street from Experimental Farm Road to the Western Corporation Limit and the payment of $194,832, the city's estimated share of the project cost. Based on the ODOT format and the date, the city's estimated cost is to be paid. This committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Questions, comments? You have another one?
And the last report is also this committee met on May 12th regarding the preliminary consent legislation requested by the Ohio Department of Transportation related to ODOT resurfacing Experiment Farm Road from the North Corporation Limit to State Route 41, which is West Main Street, in the state fiscal year 2027 work plan. The city will be required to pay approximately 38% of the project cost at the time it is bid. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared, approving the preliminary consent legislation for the ODOT resurfacing project of Experiment Farm Road from the Northern Corporation Limit to State Route 41, with the city responsible for a share of the project cost. Based on the ODOT, ODOT format, this committee supports emergency legislation, and this is also respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. This is, we reached a point in time where the citizens can have their comments, come to the podium, give your name and address. You can address anything that's on our agenda tonight. At this portion...
At this portion, you'll be limited to two minutes. Mr. Kerber, please keep the time. This is only at the end, you can talk as long as you want to talk. This is the two minute on anything that's on our agenda.
So, that's not the right...
What?
No.
No.
Good evening, council. We are going to be speaking, first of all, I'm Jenny Bolton at 85 Norbert Drive. This is my husband, Bill Bolton, from 85 Norbert Drive. We're going to be speaking again on the rezoning request for 191 Commerce Center Boulevard. I would like to address a couple of things. We were at the committee meeting last week, and we have asked several times for the city to provide us a measurement of this R4 zone. What is the width of this property from north to south? We asked prior to the city council meeting that we first attended, my husband emailed Sue Knight and asked for that, those measurements. We have yet to receive any accurate measurements of that property. At last week's committee meeting, Mr. Ida Miller was here, and when we asked about that measurement, he gave a number of 150 feet from north to south. So, my husband and I went home with this number that was just shouted out. We haven't received anything in paper. We don't know where this number came from. And we decided to stand on our property line and measure 150 feet from south to north. And if this area, I, we don't believe this area to be, in fact, 150 feet, number one. We believe that it is smaller than that because that if you measure 150 feet to the north from our property line, you impede onto some agricultural and farming property. And from my understanding from the zoning, you are not allowed to farm and mass production of agricultural areas on an R4 zone. So, I believe that this measurement is false. With that being said, I'm not sure how the council can vote on a recommendation from a committee from a determination, from a determination that was made off of numbers that have not been factually provided to us or the committee.
The law, the law and ordinance committee does not have enough information to decide or to give you a recommendation to go either way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No.
My name is Michael Bolton. I'm a resident of 1465 Lantern Lane, and this again is in response to the rezoning. To the members of council, in regards to rezoning the property, the parties all purchased their properties with the knowledge of the M2 and R4 designations. In respect of the individuals who had the foresight to provide the buffer zone many years ago, they should be credited with having best interest for the residents of the city of Troy and also the residents of Concord Township. The zoning as it stands is compliant with the principles of responsible zoning and the best interest of the community. Point number two, there are also other areas within the city of Troy that have M2 and R4 areas that have joined one another. In particular, the trade square area that Hobart resides in is adjacent to an R4 area that has no housing, but it is a natural buffer between the manufacturing facilities and the residential areas to the west. There is also on the north side of the area, an OC1 zoning that has had doctors' offices and other businesses in those buildings. Point three, I take exception to the comments that were made that only two Troy residents spoke about the rezoning, and six Concord Township residents voiced their opinions. Must one be a resident of the city of Troy to have a dog in this fight? I think the Development Department and the Zoning Department need to go back and do more work with the Comoio folks. There are other options for them to utilize the area's zone as M2, and I believe they can figure out some other formats or footprints for their development. I am much concerned about the lack of Storm Drainage allotment and the location of it in regards to the properties to the south.
Time.
The large, you could, there'll be time at the end. You can come back and address it as well or finish.
I could not get your address. I'm sorry.
1465 Lantern Lane.
Anyone else on items on our agenda? Okay. Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R23-2025?
Resolution number R23-2025. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into a master employer services agreement with American Fidelity Assurance Company for an employee voluntary insurance benefit program for full-time city of Troy employees and elected officials eligible for city-provided health benefits. This is the second reading.
Before anybody makes any motion, Mr. Kerber would like to make some comments, correct?
Yes, I would just, we've been, the city and American Fidelity have been in extensive discussions about the form of the contract, and we're just not there yet. And if you notice on this legislation, it's been worded a little bit different than our prior agreements. Right now, one important component of, as anticipated, there would be some assistance to the city for open enrollment, and that's going to be coming up fairly shortly. But the ordinance, or the resolution sets forth that the Service and Safety Director is authorized to go ahead and sign that upon approval of the law director on the contract terms, some of the things that were set up. So, there's a possibility that, should this legislation be passed, that we couldn't work out the details and the Service and Safety Director would not be authorized to go ahead and sign it. But in nature, due to the 30-day effective period for legislation, if council chose to go ahead and pass it this evening, it's still, the city would still have an opportunity to make sure that we had satisfactory contract language. But I just wanted to let you know that there is a possibility that we can't get those things hammered out.
Mr. President?
Mr. Phillips?
If we could just continue on to a next reading with this piece of legislation.
I guess the, the, part of what I was indicating that there is some sense of urgency to get the clock ticking on the 30 days on the effective date, because under this proposal, the American Fidelity would assist with the open enrollment. To the extent that we can't get the contract language worked out, we just want it signed the contract at that point in time. So, I think it's okay if council wants to go forward and if it's so inclined to proceed with, if it chose to pass the legislation, it could pass the legislation, and we would still make sure that we'd have the appropriate contact, contract language.
Mr. Light, Mr. Is...
Go ahead and...
Oh. Mr. Seavert?
I was just going, so there's no risk for going forward?
No, no, because if, if we're not satisfied with the contract language, we're not going to sign it.
We're just not going to sign it.
Okay. Mr. Schilling?
So, what we're saying here is that you want us to approve something that's not finalized yet.
I am, I am not telling you...
I mean, you're, this is, this is before us, but the contract is not finalized. And so, the question is, is if we, if we wait two weeks, if we go to another reading and wait two weeks, what's the downside of that?
Well, my understanding is that there's some timing issues with, the effective date would be pushed back, pushed back two weeks.
Could we retroactively add emergency legislation to it?
Could we retroactively?
Or reading?
Yeah, we would have to amend it. Now, just delay it further.
So, I'm, so what's the rush on the effective day? I mean, if it's effective, June, we're talking about like June 1st or something? Is that, I mean, or June 15th?
My understanding is there was going to be some assistance with the open enrollment, and if it's not effective and we don't have that, it can't be signed until it's effective, the, the contract. So, if it's pushed back, then the city would not receive the assistance with the open enrollment and the counseling that's contemplated in this. Okay.
There's a financial incentive for us to go ahead and do this on a timely basis. We will lose the ability to...
I'm thinking, having been in the insurance business for 40 years, if they get a signed contract, there'll be somebody there to help us sign them up. Regardless of when we ever get, whenever we get this thing done.
There is no financial impact here. It's all, it is a potential benefit, voluntary benefit that the employee would have available. Open enrollment is a certain period of time. If we wait two weeks, then they can't help the employees, counsel them on what they could, you know, could look at for health, for some, the other benefits, as well as these new voluntary. So, there's no downside from that standpoint to, to considering it or voting on it tonight, as well as the fact that there is language in there that I can't sign it unless Grant says everything is copacetic, and if it's not, then we move forward without it.
Mrs. Snee?
I was just going to reiterate from the personnel committee that this was a program that we felt was beneficial, and we understood that it was in addition to the benefits that are provided to employees, that it is voluntary for them, but that they would be able to get advice and counsel from this company. But I can agree that when the contract is finalized with whatever language, then the Safety Service Director could sign it. I don't have a problem with knowing that that's going to be looked over by the law director, because it was the program that we felt was valuable for employees.
Any other comments?
Motion to approve?
Move to...
Second.
We'd need a motion to suspend. This is second reading.
Suspend.
Motion to suspend the readings by Mrs. Westfall, second by Mr. Seavert. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seavert?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seavert?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R24-2025?
Resolution number R24-2025. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into PY 2025 chip program partnership agreement via and between the Miami County Board of Commissioners, the city of Pickwa, Ohio, and the city of Troy, Ohio, for the Ohio Department of Development, ODOD, Community Housing Impact and Preservation Chip Program. This was reported on this evening. This is the first reading.
Can we just suspend?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Phillips. Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution 25, 2025?
Resolution number R. 25, 2025. Resolution authorizing the City of Troy, Ohio to participate in the Cooperative Purchasing Program of the Meta Solutions Purchasing Cooperative and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R. 26, 2025?
Resolution number R. 26, 2025. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Timmons Group of Richmond, Virginia for the GIS Utility Network Implementation Project. This at a cost not to exceed $310,000. First reading.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 27, 2025.
Resolution number R. 27, 2025. Final Resolution Authorizing Consent and Cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 41 West Main Street from Experiment Farm Road to the West Corporation Limit of the City of Troy, Ohio in FY fiscal year 2026. Participation in the project and declaring an emergency. This is the final consent legislation for ODOT includes the city's payment of $194,832 as the city's estimated share of the project. First reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
Move to suspend the readings, Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Will you please read Resolution R. 28, 2025?
Resolution number R. 28, 2025. A Resolution Authorizing Preliminary Participation, Support, Consent, and Cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of Experiment Farm Road from the North Corporation Limit to State Route 41 within the Corporation Limit of the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading for this consent legislation.
Move for suspension.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Widdon, or Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O. 15, 2025?
Ordinance number O. 15, 2025. An ordinance changing the zoning of parcel ID number DO8105472 in the City of Troy, Ohio, from R4 Single Family Residential District and OC-1 Office Commercial District to M2 Light Industrial District. This is located at 91, 191 Commerce Center Boulevard, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. Third reading.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
No.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you read our final ordinance for the evening? Ordinance O. 16, 2025?
Ordinance number O. 16, 2025. Ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing 57.679 acres more or less in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio. This is the annexation known as the Smith Annexation. Council previously adopted the three pieces of legislation as required. This has now been approved by the Board of County Commissioners, returned back to the city, has had its 60 days of waiting period here, and this is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Knight, is there any communications or announcements this week?
Move to adopt.
Oh, sorry. Moving along. Who we got?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Twist to adopt, Mr. Schilling, second. Now we can call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Now, we're on to communication and announcements. Mrs. Knight, any?
No, sir.
Any comments, Mayor?
Just two tonight, I think we're all celebrating the fact that West Main Street is open, and glad that that portion of road construction is done. Also, just looking forward to the Strawberry Festival coming up, first full weekend in June, and it's coming up much faster than I think we anticipated. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Friggy?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing at this time.
Law Director, Mr. Kerber.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
I would like to echo the great work they did on West Main Street, and it will be finished when we get our black holes up. They did also did a good, great job patching on Staunton Road, and when we get done with the council comments, this is the order we're going to go tonight in public comments. We're going to go with baseball, we will go with, if anyone makes, wants to make a comment again about, I understand we have some people that want chickens. Anybody that wants to make comments about rezoning, and then the fire will be after Moving on, Mr. Schilling?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Mrs. Marshall?
I would just like to congratulate our new firefighters.
Mr. Widdon?
I don't have any comments, I wonder if our Service and Safety Director has any comments, though.
Oh, we skip you? Sorry about that.
He's been gone for so long.
It's all right, I've only got 20 minutes. So, just a couple of brief things. Memorial Day is coming up, March, March, May 26th. The city building will be closed that day, but trash and recycling will be on schedule. There will be a ceremony at 11 o'clock at the Veterans Memorial on Riverside. Prior to that, there will be a brief ceremony out at the Adam Street Bridge by the naval veterans. And the other thing is, in the interest of time, we won't do this tonight, but we did just get back from our Asian, or Japanese trade mission, met with several of our companies, as well as some prospects. Hope to have an update for the council at the next council meeting at the beginning of June.
That we greatly appreciated, for those that, particularly those that watch our streaming.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce?
No comments at this time.
Okay. Mr. Phillips?
I have nothing this evening either.
Mr. Twist?
Just congratulations to the new firefighters, Paul and Ethan, welcome to the city of Troy.
Staff! This side of council. Mr. Twi, or Mr. Seaver, we're getting there.
I'll make Todd's comment. I would like to thank everyone who came tonight and have been patient. Briefly, I just showed some members of council, but this is a 1964 sesquicentennial Troy book, and I just want to point out, since I know part of the reason that we're here, under the recreational department, it says the recreational facilities of Troy are perhaps greater than those of any city of comparable size in the United States. And I appreciate the people coming out to talk about the parks, and please get involved, even if baseball isn't your thing, get involved in the park study, and let's make sure that we continue that, have the best parks for any comparable-sized city.
Mrs. Snee?
Just want to let everyone know, I'm sure we'll announce it again, but on June 14th at 9:00 a.m. at the Troy Rec, the At-Large members will be hosting one of our At-Large community meetings, if you want to come to that, to have an informal chat.
Mrs. Westfall?
Reiterating what's already been said, and reserve some comments for after the people talk.
Baseball people, come on down. One at a time. Name and address of the podium for the record, and have your say.
Good evening, council members, my name is Grant Westfall, I live at 2570 Troy Sidney Road in Troy, Ohio. I'm here on behalf of my father, Wade Westfall, who lives at 305 West Water Street in downtown Troy. He had every intention of being here this evening, but was unexpectedly invited to the White House to meet the President of the United States as part of our county leadership delegation. Many of you know him as Miami County Commissioner, longtime Troy resident, and driving force behind youth sports, downtown development, and quality-of-life initiatives that continue to stay and strengthen our community. I know him as dad, to my kids, he is pops. So as someone who is, who was shaped by this town and by the game of baseball, I'm honored to speak for him tonight. Before I read his message, I want to share why this means so much to me. I was born right here in the Troy community, growing up in Miami East School District, attending St. Pat's School early on, and then Miami East. I played in Troy Junior Baseball, spent many years traveling with select teams, and was luckily enough to play some college ball. Some of the best memories were made on the field my dad built for me and my brothers at our family farm, a field that became known as Four Sons Field of Dreams. What started as a practice field cut out in the middle of a pasture quickly became a real ball field, hosting countless practices and games. I can remember when the Nuke Complex flooded, one of the many times, just days before a major tournament, Four Sons Field of Dreams stepped in to host the games and kept the event going. And as a side note, I should mention that my mom once warned me that if my dad put lights up on the baseball field, it was grounds for divorce. Thankfully, we avoided that call to the bullpen. That's how much this game has meant to our family. Now, as a dad and coach, I see the game through a different lens, watching my kids lace up their cleats, just like I did, and realizing how important it is that they have fields to call home, memories to make, and a community that believes that they're worth the investment. Now, I'd like to share my dad's statement. Mayor and distinguished council members of the city of Troy, I was born and raised right here in Miami County. My wife Susan grew up just steps from Duke Park, and together we raised our family in the city of Troy. Today, we are blessed to watch five of our seven grandchildren grow up in the same community we've long called home. I've been involved in youth sports for over 40 years, and for more than 30 of those, I've had the honor of serving as president of Midwest Ohio Baseball. The need we're here to address tonight is clear and urgent. As we all know, the current fields at the Nuke Complex are in floodplain. And nearly every year, our community essentially, especially dedicated volunteers running the youth program are forced to watch time, effort, and opportunity literally go down the river. Games are canceled, practices are lost, sessions are postponed, and the investment poured into our kids washed away with floodwater. This isn't just about expansion, it's about reliability. That's why we're here together, united as a baseball community. Troy Junior Baseball, Troy Trojans Baseball, Troy Bombers, Troy Junior and Senior High School Baseball, Midwest Ohio Baseball, Troy Post 43, and with the support of our community leaders and even a former professional baseball player. This project brings together the heart of Troy to invest in its future, its kids. Because this is bigger than baseball, this is about giving our children the tools to grow, to belong, and to believe in their community. Tonight, we come before you with a simple, but vital request, that the city of Troy include the development of new flood-resistant baseball fields in the parks master plan. Located on the land the city acquired several years ago, thanks to the generosity of the Paul G. Duke Foundation and the Pat and Tom Robinson Fund, the city and the Miami County Parks District. It was truly a collaborative effort, and now it's time to take the next step. We're not asking for extras, we're asking for the essentials, safe, playable, dependable fields where kids can practice and play right here at home. And along with that, we respectfully ask the city and the community begin a thoughtful and transparent dialogue around the financial commitment it will take to make this happen. We know it's a major investment, but we also know the return, in the lives of our kids, the pride of our city, and the long-term value of Troy. It's worth it. This is more than a sports issue, it's a community issue, a chance to strengthen quality of life, attract and retain families, and give our young people a reason to plant roots and come back home. It's also an economic opportunity. When families stay and play here, when the others come, when others come to Troy, they support our restaurants, shops, local businesses, creating a ripple effect that benefits the entire community. In closing, I am proud to stand with a leadership team that's ready to work hand-in-hand with you to make this happen. We bring experience, commitment, and momentum. We're not here asking the city to do it alone, we're here to partner with you. Let's give this generation of kids in Troy a place that reflects the value we place on them. Let's give them fields worthy of their dreams. We look forward to working together to bring this vision to life. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your willingness to listen.
Thank you. One note, while they're speaking, if you guys could keep as quiet as possible, because we hear the feedback and rumbling while they're speaking, would be appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Brown.
I'm Frosty Brown. I live at 703 West Market Street, born and raised here. Have pursued baseball a long time, and got a lot of opportunities through baseball. All of my education was provided by baseball and scholarships and that type of thing, and so I came back to my hometown to give back. And so today's issue is about the youngest among us, okay? Those little fellows over there. I have a place to play and a lot of these guys, and if you want to find me, my other residence is at Duke Park, okay? We run the concession stand, we've had a great relationship with the city of Troy, I have, and our TL Baseball Boosters have, and we sponsor 130 kids. Eight teams are from the Bombers, the Troy Bombers, and I have the Troy American Legion Team, and this is my 50/50 year doing that. And it's, we also have a junior team. So, we get involved with a lot of baseball. We also run a facility up by the lumberyard, and it's called the Academy, it's our Academy. And so, we have a lot of kids from a lot of different teams come there. I'm representing all the 130-some kids and coaches that belong to the TL Baseball Boosters. And I've done this so long that I don't think I remember a spring that didn't flood on these young kids, okay? We started a project a couple of years ago at Duke Park, and I'd really like to see that continue, okay? And that's what my message is today, and it's by the oldest guy here, and I just want to tell you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Heath Murray at 249 Riverside Drive in Troy. Like these guys, born and raised here, baseball's provided me unbelievable opportunities. Played at Troy High School, got a scholarship to play at the University of Michigan, was fortunate enough to play professionally for 10 years, so that's why I'm here. I've been the pitching coach, or some kind of coach, at Troy High School for the last 20, 21-plus years. You know, I actually played at, the first year, at the Nuke Fields in 1983. I remember when that all started in 1982, picking up rocks out there, when it was first graded and everything so we could go. And it was controversial back then, and I remember as a nine-year-old, like, hey, why are you doing this? You know, it's a floodplain, you know, the fields at Cookson and Haywood and Hook are adequate. Well, the fact of the matter, they weren't. And so, we had to go somewhere where you could have everything centralized, and unfortunately, over the years, we've learned that, yeah, they were right, the floodplain was an issue. So, you know, we're here today, again, like Grant said, not asking for any favors, just your support, and helping us with this endeavor and trying to get things going. I know, you know, several years ago, we made an attempt at this, to try to get one central location for these kids, to be able to hold tournaments, which, you know, will bring in a lot of revenue to the city, that we can have parking, we can have concessions, help these organizations raise money, and not have to continue to go to local businesses and asking for the same things every year, hey, we need new fencing, we need dirt, we need this, we need that, and, you know, the ability to just simply play games. So, we appreciate any support you could give us, thank you.
Thanks, Heath.
Good evening, council. I'm Ian Unger, 3388 Magnolia Drive. I'm here tonight supporting the Troy Junior Trojans Program, so we're the select travel baseball team. We will not be directly affected by these because it will be for the junior baseball, but we are in full support of it, and that's why I'm here, and thanks to a lot of our players that have showed up here today for this. I did not get to pick the batting order today, so I'm fourth batting behind these guys, it's not easy. So, I've been in Troy for 13 years, most of that playing baseball. We started out at the Nuke Complex, and like a lot of the kids that are in our program, we were kind of tired of the rainouts and stuff, so it's like, what's the other option? And we landed with travel baseball. And I was fully committed to it, I did not think I would be in travel baseball, now I'm everywhere, every weekend, but I'm okay with that. But what we have seen in our program is it's been growing, because people are looking for something else. And we want to keep Troy kids playing together in Troy. So, our program has been growing, and it's put a lot of pressure on us for our facilities, because we play at Archer and at Mercer Group Field. As our program's growing, we have less and less times for our teams to practice out there. We have less and less times for games. And then when it rains for us, we also have to reschedule, and it makes hard for us. What we're also seeing, because our program's growing, is that more kids with the talent that probably should be at the rec program are coming to ours. And then it's depleting the rec program, because they're looking for better facilities to play on. And we feel with better facilities, those kids would stay out there, make that program better, get better opportunities to play the positions they would, because if you guys haven't been to travel baseball games, it can be a little crazy and a little intense, and sometimes it's too much for some of the players. So, that is all I wanted to say, other than if we had a complex that the ones that is being proposed, our teams wouldn't have to travel to Cleveland, Indianapolis, Cincinnati. We can stay here, close at home, playing competitive teams. Okay, thank you for your time.
Sir, I have a real quick question. When you go to a tournament, let's say Cincinnati, approximately how many teams are there?
Depending on it, but it'll be age groups from eight U through 14 U, and it could be 100 to 125 teams.
All of 12 to 15 kids?
Yeah.
So, approximately 1,200 people?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a busy place to be.
Question. Jeff. On your team, how many of the players are actually from Troy, and how many of them are from other areas of either Miami County or the Tri-County area? Can you give me like an estimation on that?
Yep, we have 100 players, and 100 of them are Troy residents.
Troy residents?
Mm-hmm. Or attending Troy schools, yes.
School district.
Troy schools.
Okay, so they may have a Troy, they may have a Troy post office, but they may not live in the city of Troy?
They have a Troy address or attend Troy schools.
Okay.
Did I answer it right? I'm trying to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, any other questions?
Ty Walker, 691 Loxley Lane. I helped start that Troy Junior Program, and that was one of our rules we made when we created that, was we wanted them to be Troy residents. I mean, it was something different than what we were doing before, where we'd get kids from other communities. We wanted it to be a Troy thing, we take a lot of pride in that, so that was one of the things. So, like many of you and a lot of people in this room, I was born and raised in Troy. I mean, I was, I was born here, I graduated from Troy High School, I went away to college and came back, I've now spent, this is my 31st year as an educator at Troy. I've been fortunate enough to coach, teach a lot of kids in Troy, and coach baseball for the past 20-plus years, and a few years before that as an assistant at Troy. But even more than that, you know, I'm a citizen and a parent in Troy, you know, and that's what, that's why I'm here as well, you know. I've got to see the baseball grow in our community from a lot of people that are behind us, but I take a lot of pride in being a citizen and raising kids here, and teaching my kids, and I will spend my rest of my life here. But I know this, that I'm proud of Troy, and when I travel around this country and been to different places and talked to people, I talk about Troy. I talk about who I come from, and I talk about what makes it great, and what makes it great are the people, and our facilities, and things we've done in this town to make it something to brag about, you know. People come, I've had people come visit, they're impressed, right? I know I was at the concert a few years ago at the Mumford Sun, and people were impressed. We saw our community, you know, and I think we do that in a lot of ways, and I'm truly proud, proud to raise my family here. And I hope that we can continue to do that through baseball. I think we deserve it, our community deserves that, our kids deserve that, and I think we have a great working system with the cigarette department, and I feel like we've done that in a lot of places like Troy, like Market Street Field, and I think it will continue by having a facility that would be good for our youth. I think that's important, and that's a value, not as a coach, but as a city, city community member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to have these reading glasses. Good evening, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, my name is Greg Beamer. I serve as the Vice President of Baseball Operations for Midwest Ohio Baseball. I live at 7610 North Main Street in Dayton. I'd like to begin by recognizing the President, Wade Westfall. He intended to be here, but as Grant alluded, he's busy with the President. Good call. He asked me to share the league's full support for Troy's efforts to expand and improve its baseball infrastructure. The Midwest Ohio Baseball League was founded in 1990 as the Dayton Baseball League. In 2005, we struck, we restructured and renamed the league to better reflect our mission and regional reach. At our peak, we served 4,000 families and over 1,000 coaches, from Sydney of the north to northern Cincinnati, to Richmond in the west, and beyond Springfield to the east, truly covering the entire Miami Valley. Our mission is to provide the highest appropriate level of competition for players age 7 to 16, while developing character, discipline, and sportsmanship. We work hand-in-hand with recreational leagues, tournament organizers, and school programs to create a healthy, sustainable baseball ecosystem in the Miami Valley. Let me be clear about this, we do not manage fields. We do not own fields. We do not profit from fields. But we do bring teams. We bring families. We bring opportunity when infrastructure is available in place to support it. And right now, Troy is missing that opportunity. Many Troy-based teams are forced to play in Dayton or other nearby cities, not because they want to, but because they must. The lack of reliable flood-resistant fields means local families are spending more time on the road and more money traveling just to give their kids a chance to improve and compete. That comes at a cost, not only to the families, but to Troy as a whole. Weekend games and tournaments should be bringing people here, filling hotels, restaurants, and downtown businesses. But when fields are flooded or unavailable, that revenue goes elsewhere. We've seen how other communities thrive when they invest in modern baseball infrastructure, fields with smart drainage, reliable surfaces, and scheduling flexibility. They become destinations. They keep local kids local. They attract visitors and fuel local economics. Troy should be that kind of destination. It isn't just about baseball, it's about quality of life, it's about economic development, and it's about showing Troy families that this city is invested in its children and in the experiences that shape them. On behalf of the Midwest Ohio Baseball League, its board, its coaches, and the thousands of families we serve, I want to express our full support for the development of flood-resistant, tournament-ready baseball fields here in Troy. This is a smart investment, it's a community-driven investment, and we're proud to stand behind it. Thank you again for your time and your leadership. Thank you.
I'm Paul Wick, 1262 West Main Street. I am President of Troy Junior Baseball, and with all my baseball community here, we are just coming before the board to ask for the collaboration to be able to be playing on good fields. I did just come from the complex tonight, we were finally able to play on a couple of fields that we haven't been able to play on since the last flood. A month of working on one field, we finally got to play on it tonight. It's just, it's a lot of, lot of work out there, but we are willing to do it for our kids to play baseball. I grew up here in Troy, I played baseball out at the Nuke Complex myself. Was I good? No. I was never going to make it to college or the MLB, you know, but I just loved playing the game. The game allowed me the opportunity to be with friends, play together as a team, and learn how to win and lose. Baseball is so unpredictable, any team really has an opportunity to win a tournament. Last season, our J-Ball team, our seven and eight-year-olds, we had one team that didn't, that won one game all year, and came back in the tournament, they overcame all of those failures, came back in the tournament, and were second place. So, having these kids learn those life lessons on the, on the baseball field is just one of the greatest things that you can have in a, in a city, in a community. Baseball is America's pastime, so we want to keep that going, keep it coming to Troy, and have our, our players from Troy. We have almost 400 players in Troy Junior Baseball. That's actually a low number, from when I talked to other people years back, we've had over 1,000 players in Troy Junior Baseball, and we only have just about, just under 400 this year. They are coming back to us, they are tired of traveling, they don't want to run off to Pickla and Tipton City just to play on a field, and some people can't afford travel money ball. So, we want to offer our, our residents, our Troy people, the opportunity to play baseball at a recreational league, at recreational prices, at a recreational skill level. These, some kids are like me, I wasn't going to make it very far anywhere. I was, I love to pitch, but 40 miles an hour is never going to make it to anywhere besides recreational ball. That's, that's, that was the best I was ever going to be. So, I joined the board four years ago, and we have been fighting this, this water ever since. The concession stand itself hasn't been used as a concession stand since 2013 flood. We've had food trucks come in and set up for our, our players and to be able to eat from that. We just have so many problems with our fields that we just, sometimes just can't play. Unfortunately, with the storms tomorrow, Wednesday, that they're projected, we may not be able to play the rest of the week. Tonight's games may be the last ones this week before Memorial Day. It just, it's, it's sad that we have to do this, but unfortunately, that's what we have to do. We will keep doing it, I'll keep out there, I'm out there every single night. If you want to talk to me, that's, that's where I'm at. After I get out of work at Haywood Elementary, I'm usually heading to the, heading to the complex to do something, to get ready for the games that night. We, as a baseball community, just appeal to our elected leaders to use the land that you currently have, to collaborate with us as a baseball community, plan, to build the fields that we need. I have great aspirations for baseball in this town, I'm sure that when we have better fields to play on, that the youth of Troy will come back to our fantastic organization. The youth of our community need you, our council members, to put this great plan that Wade Westfall put together as a top priority for our Parks Department, and make it so that we have great fields to play on again. Thank you.
Mr. Schilling.
Again, you said you had, you had 400 players in your...
Just under 400.
Troy Junior Baseball, and you play...
Five years old to 15.
Okay, you play out of Nuke Field?
Yes.
Okay, and again, how many of those children are actually Troy residents, and how many are from other parts of the county and that type of thing?
99%, I mean, it's almost all of them. We have very few, there's, I remember one that contacted me, is the only one I can think of, that was actually from Pickla, and they were late registration to Pickla, and they came to us. So, almost all 400 are Troy residents, Troy addresses.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rob Polvin, I live at 760 Willow Creek Way in Troy, and I've been one of the longer board members for Troy Junior Baseball, about seven years, and my kids were back in, baseball back in, about 14 years ago, so I'm one of the longer-term members of TJB. But I really want to be here tonight to thank you for your time, but really what we're talking about is a, an opportunity for us, for the community, and we're asking you to approve this new baseball field initiative for the kids. They're more than ready to play on, good fields, they're well-deserved fields. It's not just about baseball, as you've heard, you know, it's a common theme here, it's about Troy's future, and that's why we're coming here to ask for your help. New baseball complex means opportunities for our kids to get active off their phones, learn about teamwork, development, skills, and to help them throughout their lives. Safe place to play for them, spend their time away from against screens, engaging with other peers. I think about the economic boost, I know you heard this already, tonight, tournaments and games will bring huge opportunities for Troy, filling our restaurants, shops... Fill in our restaurants, shops, hotels, create new jobs. Really, it's a win-win for the, the community and for the, you know, for the, the city. You've heard a lot about maybe the cost for the program, but in logistics, but we, we hear you, we're listening. We want to make sure we're transparent throughout the process and, you know, work with the city on that. So really maximize the benefits to the community. We're committed to, again, transparency, accountability in every step of the process. Also, I think about the, you know, make a decision that will benefit our community for years to come. We urge you to vote yes. You've heard a lot of good, you know, good comments so far. So let's play baseball. I just wanted, you know, one more thing here. So throughout the years, I've seen lots of floods. Recently, I was, I pulled, picked a table out of the, out of the woods, but it flew down the, you know, down the, the whole park. So it'd be a great opportunity for the city, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Question. Mr. Widdon.
Just a reminder, you guys, seven fields you currently have out in right now?
Hmm, more than that.
We have, uh, A-Fields, right. A-Fields.
Would a, would a new complex just, if you had your idea, would it be a mixture of T-ball fields and the same number of fields?
Right, we have, yeah, two T-ball fields, we have two, two J-Ball fields, junior baseball fields, two minor fields and two major fields currently. And those, I remember 14 years ago, that park was packed. We had concession stands. We can't do it anymore because of the flooding. But yeah, it'd certainly be, be full with baseball.
But that would be the appropriate mix, you would think?
Yeah, I would think so with all the other community organizations here, too. I mean, I think we definitely fill the fields up.
Okay. Thank you.
So the more fields, the better, but yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leanne Stewart, and I'm here as the Director of the Miami County Visitors and Convention Bureau in downtown Troy. I live at 4049 Cozy Crop Drive in Dayton. First and foremost, new and expanded facilities like this would be amazing for our youth here in Troy and Miami County. But as a couple of other, others have mentioned, this provides an opportunity for us to bring in visiting teams and additional money to the community and to the region. So families spend thousands and thousands of dollars every year traveling to sporting events and tournaments for their children. You know, we have events like, you see it with cheerleading and wrestling at Hobart Arena, Winter Garden International, strawberry soccer, which just took place this past weekend, and other events as well. So we would love to host those visiting teams in Miami County. You know, they'll, they'll stay in our hotels, they'll shop in our stores, eat in our restaurants, visit our attractions. It would be a great boost to the economy while those families are here. So I'm here just to tell you that our organization supports this initiative. We see value in, in this project and what it can bring to the community, and we look forward to future discussions and collaborative efforts that we at the Visitors Bureau can be part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Come on up.
I just want to say...
Name and address, please.
My name is Troy Dean. I live on Barnhart Road in Troy, Ohio. I would like to say, yeah, I've been involved in this baseball program from its beginning. My husband did so much work up there on those fields to get our kids the ability to play. Like, look at all these kids here. They want to play baseball. It floods. It floods a lot. And it's time now, look at me, it's time now for all of you to make the good decision for these kids, not for everybody else, for the kids. And I want to tell you one other thing, and this is bad. I've been a real estate agent for over 40 years. I'm not here to advertise bad, but I am here to say to you, in those, you know, they talked about the ba, the concession stand? They can't have food in the concession stand? Guess what else? There's black mold in those bathrooms that these kids go to when they're out there. You figure it out. Is that good for those kids? Anybody? It's not good. So you figure it out.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing us to come in and speak to you about the Newt Complex. My name is Stephanie Melvin. I'm at 1418 Barnhart Road. I don't know why I'm so emotional right now, but my husband and our family have been playing out there since the 80s. My husband coached. He was a board member for years. And all the people, just like what they do now, had to put that park back together again every time it flooded. I looked at the board roster for the organization, and they're only half-full. I can only imagine even today, let alone back then, having to come into the season already feeling defeated, that we know it's going to flood, and we're going to need all the volunteer hours and for people to come out and put the park back together so the kids can play. You know, and we all feel very strongly that we'd like to have those fields elsewhere so that the kids can play and get their opportunity to play. You know, the fact that so many kids have moved into travel teams for numerous reasons, I realize, is, it speaks, it does not bode well for the organization out there and for the fields out there. So I just encourage all of you to, to get behind it and just appreciate your time and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Raderman, 1252 Cole Harbor Drive. I'll be brief. I'm just a coach out there. I coach T-ball. We've had three games already canceled, rescheduled, and it just gets tough. But the one thing I, we would, a new facility that would really be great to address is the parking and the handicap accessibility. I, I coach T-ballers, and all the grandparents love to come watch their kids play T-ball. But to push a stroller or to push a, a wheelchair or to push, you know, anything, or to get somebody out there that has a physical, you know, disability, it's extremely tough. And then they have to park way far away. So like I said, a new facility would really, really help in those just small little sectors of, of what really needs to be addressed. So yes, the flooding is horrible, but there's, there's, it's just more than just the flooding. So please consider it. We'd love to work with you, but appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting everybody speak. I live at 303 Floral Avenue. My children play baseball on every single day.
Name, your name, sir?
Oh, Corey Welborn, my bad. My children play baseball on an everyday basis out at Boyer Park. And here we have a group of us trying to get better facilities at Newt or someplace else. And I'm being told that there is another park that might possibly be torn down with a baseball field, and that is Boyer Park. The backstop was taken down, and I was told that it was going to be put back up, but now it's been stopped. We've made multiple calls asking when it may be put back up. I was just trying to find that out, if anyone could give me an answer at any point in time. But I would also like to say that the Newt facilities are in major need of... How do I say this? They're, they're in a major need of uplifting. As the one lady said, the mold in the bathrooms is a bit much. I know there are quite a few people that's been out there trying to help when they can to facilitate that, but I would really like for you guys to put in consideration of finding something for these kids, better for these kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alexis Wick. Address is 1262 West Main Street. My husband is Paul, President of Troy Junior Baseball. I'm speaking on behalf of an outsider coming into the city of Troy. I knew about the city of Troy growing up. I li, I grew up in Beaver Creek, went to Carroll High School. From Beaver Creek, played in Kettering. Kettering had a phenomenal, phenomenal recreation, baseball community. The city of Troy has Troy Junior Baseball. The field in the complex that they have is not very good. Paul alone has spent over 40, 50 hours trying to get one field ready to play this year. One field. Field one. That is, the amount of money that could be brought into the city of Troy is astronomical. You have tournament fees, then you have individuals who are going to stay in the hotels, bring in revenue to the city of Troy. It really would be beneficial for the city to help out with this. Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jonathan Campfey. I live at 1100 Winchester Drive in Troy, Ohio. I don't have a ton to say, but I, I've really enjoyed listening to everyone in this community speak about how much they value, not only the sport of baseball, but what I want to emphasize to you as just a dad and someone who has coached through Troy Junior Baseball is the investment in our community, in our future of our community. I've been to, because of baseball, been up to Sidney, been up to Pickwa, Springfield. They've got some nice ball fields. And we have a couple of nice fields here, but moreover, the city needs to invest in its future, just like we passed the, the levy to support building new schools for the sake of our kids, for the sake of our future, to bring jobs, to bring families to this city. And speaking of which, my wife and I have lived here for seven years. We love Troy. We have three boys. All of them are playing baseball or have played baseball, and we've made a lot of friends, a lot of connections. We're starting to feel like this is our home now. Like, we can put down roots, raise our kids, we have a, we have a great school system, and we're excited for the investment that this town is making. And I want to compliment you all, not only for the, the, the work that you've done, making sure that the infrastructure to have Troy be a town that people want to be in, but also for what will happen. So I just want to encourage you, a dad, a coach, a citizen of Troy, please invest in your future, the kids represented behind me. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on baseball? Anybody in the hallway?
Good to go.
No, he's got one cup. I appreciate all of you people coming and speaking and concern, especially recognition of Mr. Brown as being an alumni of his program, the dedication that, that you have done over 53 years and not to downplay Ty or Heath or any of the other coaches. I think, I think the, your points were well received. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can go home and...
Put your kids to bed.
Put your kids to bed or go out and play baseball. And we'll move on to, we got, people want to talk about chickens?
Bill, are you a Pirates fan, too?
Oh, I root for them. I probably, I like the Pirates side, I root for them.
I tell you, my cousin got married, uh, over in Pittsburgh. His bride from Pittsburgh. And they had, like, the night before, instead of like a rehearsal dinner, they rented out part of the, that was the place in Pittsburgh. And that, that stadium's awesome.
That's sort of a home.
Yeah, we have, we have...
I'm starting to watch some chicken now.
No, I'm enjoying it.
You got the great, great...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not big enough, it's not big enough to put, like they're talking.
We don't have, we don't have a park to get that much of it.
No, it's just...
Railroad tracks.
I'm glad.
Anything else?
Anything else? Come on up before we get too... If not, we'll go to you. Chicken?
Any other topics other than fire? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Did someone bring Chick-fil-A or something? That would...
Hey, my name is Heather Schenker. I live at 522 Union Street. We've lived here, yeah, yeah, hang on.
Hey, baseball, if you're going, shut the door.
We can't shut the door. Can't shut the door.
I know, but move on downstairs.
If they shut the door...
I know, I know, I know.
Hi, my name is Heather Schenker. I live at 522 Union Street here in town. I've lived here for a little over a year. We're trying to redo the house because the previous people were not the best. If you Google the address, you will know. So we're working a lot. Part of the issue that we've had, and I spoke with Jeff last week, we have a speeding problem. We have people 60, 70, 80 miles an hour down the road. It's 25 mile an hour zone. I've spoke with the police department. I've been told by sergeants that they are not ticketing unless we're going 15-plus miles an hour over the speed limit. When I went through school, it was taught by a sheriff. My grandfather was a sheriff in Logan County. Eight, you're fine, nine, you're mine. I understand it's a situation-by-situation basis, but the fact that we're getting people going 40-plus before we're giving them a ticket, I have young children. We're a family of seven, that is five children, my husband and myself. We should not have to work a job to keep our kids safe in the yard. We've got semi-trucks that are hauling, trying to flip over the railroad tracks, and we're waiting for the day that one of the semi-tankers just goes down because it's an issue. I've asked for a speed bump. I've asked for the digital speedometers. I'm getting told, well, that's a problem because it's a safety hazard. Yeah, so is my kid's getting hit because somebody wants to fly down the road. I have a minivan. We park on the street because we don't have parking, and trying to get an infant into the car, just myself. You know, I'm holding my child, and then I put her in the car and get her in her seat, and we are almost getting hit and ran off the road by trucks that are flying around the curve. We live a distance from a stop sign. We talked last week about possibly putting in a stop sign. I don't know what you guys can do, but it's an issue, and we got to figure something out. But I was told to come in here because officers are not willing to listen to me unless it's coming from the city.
How far down Union did you say you were?
We live about eight houses from the railroad tracks going towards them. We live right down by Nova Cell.
Down by the baseball field?
Yes.
Mercer Field, okay.
Yes.
What was your address again?
Follow up with the chief.
Yep, can we, we will refer that and see what Mr. Chief McKinney will do.
But I was told to come in here because officers are not willing to listen to me unless it's coming from the city.
How far down Union did you say you were?
We live about eight houses from the railroad tracks, going towards them. Uh, we live right down by Nova Cell.
Down by the baseball field?
Yes.
Mercer Field? Okay.
Yes.
What was your address again?
Five twenty-two.
Follow up with the chief.
Yep, can we, we will refer that and see what Mr. Chief McKinney will do for you?
Okay. Uh, they did bring out a car and leave it unattended last week, uh, to see if they could get something. And then we had an officer parked right across, right in front of my house, uh, across the street from the car, and he ended up screeching tires to whip around and pull somebody over, which, that was after he had told me, and I've taken it up through council. I just, I'm trying to get something dealt with because we don't feel safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll work on it. Thank you. Anyone else? Feel free.
My name is Steve Schmidt. I live at two forty-eight Riverside Drive. And what got me to come tonight is I ran into a friend that was in EMS and fired for years, and he brought up the new ambulance they put in service. And actually, what it is, is the guys that are leaving, we're losing some really good people. And the thing is, when things aren't succeeding, you don't continue to go down the same path and think that's going to work. We can't change society, but we can change our actions because some of these people we've lost is because of what the city of Troy's done. I've always been honest with you, Robin, and this is why I'm here tonight. That ambulance is not designed for patient care. It's a transport vehicle. It's my understanding they can't even get all their gear in it, their fire gear. It may have everything for ACLS, but I don't want to be in the back of a Crackerback box trying to start an IV. And if something goes wrong, because on falls, they downgrade falls because they don't think they're anything. Falls are one of these things, usually it's caused by something. And there's the old saying in EMS, time is tissue. Well, when I first started, we chased up, it should be chased, and as time went on, we chased less. We chased less. There's times people are left out there with two people, taking care of someone that's critical, and they're not calling the engine because they're so far away that they're better off throwing them in the medic and going. That's not what I think the city should be doing. We pay taxes for services, not to do other things. They, oh, let's see, where am I? It's a turnoff to employees. I know guys that will not apply here when you run that ambulance the way you're doing it because they don't want to run clear across town to take something that might be minor then turns out serious, and they get their butts run off that day because they're on that medic fifteen. I think the other thing I've heard complaints from the guys is that, say, the policies are being changed all the time. They're not sure what they're supposed to do, and in the fire service, one of the big thing is stuff is clear and concise. You can't be changing stuff all the time to meet a need so you can make this thing work. The first thing that should be done tonight, Robin, is that thing should be taken out of service. You have the power, tell him, take it out of service. We should not be putting our people in, running clear across town from downtown on someone that falls and you turn out, whoops, this is a stroke, and it's one of your loved ones. They're back to time and tissue. If you want to run somebody out there, which you do, it's called backfill. You let thirteen take the run, you take that ambulance, take two guys out there, and they fill in while those guys are on a run. I've never heard of a city running a vehicle clear through the other side of town to cover another station that's in-house. One thing we do is, I hear this, hours of utilization. That is for EMS. Why are we applying it to the fire service? Patrick? That's not for, that's EMS, not fires. My understanding is, we're not paying our guys to go to medic school. They have to do it on their own time. I've heard if the guys go to medic school, they have to fill, have to find filling. There's not another city around here with the employment situation it is that's not paying their people. And if you do find one, it might be few, but you have to do things to get people here. We're losing people that I bet, before I left, I'd have bet my whole paycheck that these kids would have never left. And we've lost a few good ones lately, and here's the thing is, I know three or four that are looking to leave. Then on the fire, what bothers me about the fire is, the busier our medics are because we're a cross-selling department, the more often we're going out on fires with two and four people that get there early. Just the other day, I seen an article on fire engineering that was talking about how important it is to have somebody out of the building in the first two to three minutes if you're doing a rescue. With the way we're staffing now, that's not happening, unless you'd be lucky and everybody would be in station and things would fall. One thing on rescue, I want you to know, firefighter goes down, when we were taking our classes, to get a firefighter out, it takes three to four evolutions. And if you got it, if you're doing it right, there should be four people need to evolution. Do the math, that's twelve to sixteen people to save a firefighter. And yes, this is about firefighter safety a point to a point, but it boils down to, we owe the citizens the best thing we can do. And I think one thing that bothers me too is some of these guys leaving, when they leave, I don't know what the exact word was, it's like, well, if you want to leave, go ahead and leave. Well, if that gets down to the other people that already work there and they hear that stuff, what do you think the attitude is? I've always been upfront with you. I've never wanted the city to go add twenty people. I understand that's not realistic, but I understand it's realistic to put five downtown, five out of Station Three, and three at Three, because the stats show when you start sending two people on a piece of equipment, you increase their chance of getting hurt or killed. There's not a study out there that says it's safe to start a fire scene with four people. It's thirteen to seventeen, most of your staff, and I understand we're not going to ever hit seventeen, but even if we have full staffing, we're not going to hit thirteen probably. But this is just totally, keeps declining, and it's like eating away from the service we're supposed to provide. And it's, it's wrong, and it's, maybe you guys aren't getting told the truth. Maybe people are holding things back. But you know what you need to do? Go talk to people. Robin, you need to go talk to your...
Mr. Schmidt, our, our rules require you to address the whole body, not direct everything to one person.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Questions, if you have questions, go talk to people. And I'll be honest with you, you probably should do it private because there's people in this, in this building that will shut you up or put people down because they don't want certain things out there. I don't, I just, I think I'm done, but something needs to be done.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else?
Good evening again. It's Jenny Bolton from eighty-five Norbert. I don't know if in the chaos of everybody leaving, we missed our opportunity to speak again on... Okay, I just wanted to confirm it.
No, you, you can.
Well, the only thing we really wanted to ask at this point was, um, is there an opportunity for an appeal because it was not a unanimous vote according, there is some verbiage in the appeal section of the zoning code that we were not sure if we were able to appeal or not. Does anybody know the answer to that?
Mr. Kerber?
Uh, generally, the, oh, I'm sorry, the ordinance, uh, was passed, uh, there's, uh, there's really not an appeal process on a zoning change as such, but, uh, you know, there's, uh, it wasn't passed by emergency legislation, uh, you know, it's, you know, in Ohio, communities have the ability to, uh, use a referendum or something of that nature.
Okay. Can I just read to you what it says and maybe you can help me understand?
Well, uh, you know, I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
And, uh, because sometimes when you're parsing through different, I'd like to look at it in context and maybe have an opportunity to talk to you.
Understood, thank you. And I would like to also just invite everybody out to our property to take a look at what is being requested. Did you guys voted on that zoning? I know the vote has been made, but I still feel like we are, um, ready to possibly appeal this if we have the opportunity and maybe hire legal counsel if necessary to try and protect our property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did drive by your property, just so you know. I did. I did. I knew it was your property because I saw you in the driveway. But I did, I did go out and look at it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments?
Hello. Thomas Reed, I'm the president with Troy Firefighters Local sixteen thirty-eight. Um, I live at thirty, three forty-one Cardigan Road, Dayton. So, yeah, I just kind of wanted to talk about medic fifteen for a minute. I'm sure a lot of you have already seen a lot of stuff out there. The way it was presented to us, um, we had, we were given an email prior to all this, before it was put in service. Uh, so, medic fifteen will be placed at Station Eleven and will respond to the first priority four or five call. The response will be determined, the response will be determined by the platoon commander. The second member of the medic fifteen crew will be from a scheduled shift on duty at Station Eleven. This will place medic eleven as the fourth out ambulance in the event that medic fifteen is on a call. In the event of a higher priority call at Station Eleven, medic eleven will respond with its normal assigned crew. In the event of a call-off, this, um, for the scheduled shift, the previously scheduled overtime position will fill the vacancy on shift. Uh, this will then make medic fifteen unavailable for the shift. This member may have the option to extend to the nineteen hundred hours or keep until the seventeen hundred hours. So that's what we were told, uh, multiple occasions. Day one, that changed. Uh, medic eleven was pretty much pushed aside. Uh, it is not responding to high priority calls. If, uh, like, if medic fifteen is out on a call, a low priority call, and a high priority call comes in, uh, it could be heart attack, stroke, difficulty breathing, full arrest, uh, that kind of stuff. The outer stations are coming in and taking those calls from a farther distance. Our concern is the response time to get to these critical calls. Uh, you know, the way it was presented, you know, we still kind of had our questions, but like I said, day one, it changed immediately. Uh, also, what changed was if someone wants to call off. That also happened day one, uh, but it was, it ended up being filled and put back in service, um, most recent, was a couple of days ago, uh, someone called in sick. Uh, one of our members, uh, was forced to work, and he had already, um, his kid at Miami's school, they had a field trip to Columbus. He was supposed to be a chaperone. He could not make it because we went back on what we were told. So he was forced to work. Medic fifteen stayed in service. So the core issue here isn't just about a vehicle or a shift, uh, it's about resources and staffing. Adding one person to a shift will not fix this. Medic fifteen can't run the way it's intended with just one additional person. We need a realistic plan with the right number of people to make it safe, sustainable and effective for both the public and our personnel. We're here to ask for your help. You can't run a department on burnout, broken promises, and Band-Aid solutions. The damage is already being done, and if we don't make meaningful changes, we will lose even more good people. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, then our next meeting will be June second at seven PM, right here. Thank you for attending. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your comments. We are adjourned.